I'd like to welcome all to the September 12, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. And the first order of business is to consider the minutes from the August 8, 2016 meeting. Did everybody get a copy of those minutes? And has everyone read those minutes? I'm going to abstain from voting on this because of my absence. So I'll turn it over to my vice chair to go from there in terms of going through the minutes. Yes, go ahead and ask for a motion, please.
Is there a motion on the minutes of August 8?
Madam Chair, I'll move that the August 8 minutes, as revised, be approved.
We need to know the revisions.
Is there, sir?
The revisions are already in the ones that you have.
Okay, okay, so we don't, and that includes Mr. Barnes.
But not all of the ones that you, you had suggested a second round.
Okay, so, I do have some revisions to the minutes that I sent to staff that they didn't get until today. So I believe they were handed out to you this afternoon by Ms. Pickarol.
I'll withdraw my motion to approve until we hear your revisions.
Okay. So my first note, and I believe it should be on what you have, the minutes should actually reflect the actual order of the agenda for that evening on August 8. What's listed as 5B, Washington's Discovery, was moved before item 4, which was the accounting for Charles County's Ecosystem Services. And so I believe the minutes should reflect that. Under personal appearances, I think it says that one of the people spoke about a possible approval of Washington's Discovery Plan and requested standing. I believe her request should be included in the minutes. On page, under B, Washington's Discovery, which was really earlier, Ms. Sherard wanted to add, after the first sentence, or include in the first sentence, several of the members had questions, mixed cluster conventional lots, open space, and superior design criteria, and firearm use on adjacent property. Additionally, as you go down, Ms. Shertler listed several reasons why she was against the plan's approval, which is in there. During the debate on the motion, Mr. Lesnar approached counsel with a request to withdraw the matter. Counsel relayed to the commission Mr. Lesnar's request to defer the motion on the floor. And then Ms. Shertler called for the question. And then at the end of that sentence, the motion failed due to a tie vote of 3 to 3. Mr. McGoon and Mr. Barnes withdrew the original motion to approve. When asked if the request to withdraw the motion required a vote, the commission members were advised it did not. And then further down, strike the first sentence because it was out of order, Mr. Lesnar requested a deferral. So the next paragraph should start, Mr. McGoon moved the matter be deferred at this time to allow the applicant to make changes. Mr. Barnes seconded the motion. Insert, Mr. Lesnar was invited to address the commission and requested a deferral at this time for a short period to allow for a response to Ms. Shertler's concerns. A vote was taken, and it was again tied 3-3. And then insert, and the motion to defer was lost. The attorney added, advised, it will be scheduled again for consideration. At the request of counsel, the commission took a five-minute recess, this is addition to the original notes. At the request of counsel, the commission took a five-minute recess after the deliberations on Washington's Discovery and before the Ecosystem Services presentation. Then after Cambridge Meadows, insert, during the recess, this plan was administratively deferred. Strike, this plan is continued. And the same applies for Royal White Oak. During the recess, this plan was administratively deferred. Striking the line, the plan is continued. So it should read on both of them, during the recess, this plan was administratively deferred at the request of the applicant. So those are the proposed changes to the minutes.
We decided in-house to limit discussions from individuals to three minutes and groups five minutes. And again, I'm going to stress that any item that's on the agenda cannot be discussed in those personal appearances. And I certainly hope people comply with that request because that's very important so that we can move through the agenda and discuss things in relationship with what needs to be said. And with that said, I want to turn it over to Ms. Weaver, who's a county attorney, who has some additional comments.
It was on Washington Discovery. You want me to say it, ma'am?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can everybody hear me with this microphone? Okay, so one of the issues that came up from the August 8 meeting, there was a lot of concern and confusion regarding where things stood as a result of the August 8 meeting. And some of that, I believe, is going to be clarified in the minutes, you know, once they are approved. But the county attorney's office enlightened the concerns that were raised. We went through the tape, I know I went through it at least six times, and two of the attorneys in my office went through the tape as well. And one of the questions I think that was coming up was, what was the effect of a tie vote before this body? And as the motion to approve the Washington Discovery preliminary subdivision plan was being discussed, the deputy county attorney was approached and basically asked if they could, the statement was withdrawn, but I think that was turned to defer, to defer their plan. And the deputy county attorney made the board aware that's what the applicant was asking for. And then that kind of took over, you know, the discussion kind of took over there. But then, right before that got really intense, as far as discussion about motion to defer, Ms. Shertler asked to call the question, which basically means stop the discussion and let's go back to the motion, which was on the floor, which was motion to approve. Her request to call the question, which was the motion that was being voted on, and I think that was made clear to the members as far as, what are we voting on? I think Mr. Ball and a couple other people made it clear. And the vice chair lady restated the motion. That motion was a tie vote. Now, to complicate things a little further, under U.S. Rules of Procedure, it could be argued that a tie vote means basically nothing happened. Because your rules of procedure say you need a majority vote to take action. So you could look at it as if nothing really happened. Under the case law in Maryland, however, generally a tie vote acts like a denial. So I think what needs to happen, and for this body, you should really define what the result is of your tie vote in your rules of procedure. But as it stands for Washington's Discovery, ultimately, I don't think it's dispositive because even when you go through everything that occurs, we had the tie vote on the, call the question, and then we had a tie vote on the motion to defer. But the applicant was clearly told to come back today, or to come back, and the gender request was removed. And there was ultimately no vote taken on the preliminary subdivision plan. So it needs to come back because there was never a vote taken because the motion and the second was withdrawn by Mr. McGoon and Mr. Barnes. So there was, that motion did not remain active by the time we got to the deferral because they were withdrawn. And there was no vote taken on the preliminary subdivision plan. So while there were a lot of irregularities and I think confusion that occurred during the meeting, I think ultimately, particularly out of fairness, this should come back and you need to redress the issue of their approval because it was never addressed and decided at the last meeting.
Yes. One of my concerns with this is that, it's my understanding, looking through Robert's Rules and Regulations, that the motion, once the motion was made, the motion to approve was made and seconded and acknowledged by the chair, then it belonged to the body. And it could not be withdrawn without a vote, without the consent of the body. And when I asked that question at that meeting, I was told we did not need to vote on it. So, as far as, I know it was a sticky mess, but that's another important issue because we never voted, we didn't vote to approve withdrawing the motion. And once the motion tied, the motion to, once the motion to defer was lost, then we should have gone back to that original motion.
But, I mean, even that is correct, the fact of the matter is there was no vote taken.
But, I'm sorry. Can I just make a point? But that was at the advice of counsel at that time. I mean, if I would have known that, then I would have made a motion that we needed to continue. We were told not to.
I completely understand what you're saying. But I'm trying to build where we are now and what happened and what hasn't happened. And ultimately, there was no decision made by this commission on that preliminary subdivision plan.
But by what authority can we put it back, can it be put back on the agenda?
I believe administratively, it was placed back on the agenda, which can happen.
So the administration, and by administratively, what does that mean? Because there's another administrative deferral.
I believe it means by action of the staff. And actually, that was the direction given, it was a statement made at the Planning Commission meeting, that this is coming back on the next agenda. So that's kind of the notice that went to the applicant, and to the public, and to this body, that it was coming back.
But I still don't know the authority. The authority in either Robert's Rules or our policies and procedures, by what authority could we bring it back? By what authority can administrative overrule a decision by this board?
But there was no decision.
Well, the motion to defer failed. So the motion was, I'm sorry, the motion was lost.
But ultimately, you never, you never took a vote on the plan. There was never a vote taken on motion to approve. Even though the motion was made and withdrawn, I understand your point that that should have been voted on, but ultimately, this board never took a vote on the motion to approve the plan.
So in essence, somebody other than a member of this board can defer a project when the vote to defer was lost, is what you're saying? That we can administer, somebody not involved in the process can become a part of the process? Even though I don't believe it's cited in either Robert's Rules or our practice and procedure?
Well, if you look at the rules, your practice and procedure, it says you need a majority vote to take any action. So technically, the motion to defer didn't happen. I mean, the case was never deferred by this board, or not deferred because you got a tie vote. And that's my point about, it's really, I think you are really need to clearly define in your rules, what's going to be the effect of the motion, of when you have a tie vote. Because ultimately, I mean, there's merit to the fact that it's like there was no action taken under your rules of procedure because it says you have to act by a majority vote to take action. And there was no majority vote. So arguably, there was no action taken. Because there was no, even on the motion to defer, there was a tie vote.
So Ms. Weaver, the way I understand it, and we are supposed to be in the process of updating those rules and procedures, that that specific item needs to be addressed in those rules and procedure in terms of a tiebreaker versus not having a majority of members present?
That would be my recommendation for this board to consider that. And the Board of Appeals has a rule that deals with what happens in a tie vote, if you might want to look at, just for, to get some research or history or reference to some ideas you might want to come up with. But again, I think there would be less of an open question if it was handled in your rules of procedure. Because the case law points to one result, I think your rules of procedure could arguably point to a very different result. And I think the way to clear it up lies with the power of this board, to just clear it up in your rules of procedure.
And it's not addressed in Robert's Rules, a tie vote?
Well, I don't recall off the top of my head, I went to the case law, and I went to basically the, what your rule say. And I believe that based upon those two, there's not, I mean, if anything Robert's Rules is going to say, it's like no action was taken. I can't quote through a rule number right now, but I went to the case law because there is case law almost to impact when administrative board comes up with a tie vote.
So then according to case law, because the motion to defer was lost, then that means that vote was denied, would be a denial?
It would operate like a denial.
So under case law, we shouldn't go forward with it?
But under your rules of procedure, it says you need a majority vote to take any action. So that's what I'm saying, that's why the clarity needs to happen. Because your rules of procedure says you need a majority vote to take action. So it's not clear what the action is when you get a tie vote.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on then. So that's, I'll suggest to the assistant county attorney that we look at that, Ms. Weaver, in relationship to what the Board of Appeals has in terms of, when you have a, in terms of a tiebreaker in relationship to members.
And I would just give that as example, you all can come up with your own rule. I would just give that as example, if anyone wanted to do the research, because I know the Board of Appeals does have a rule that deals with that, when they have a tie vote.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission members on this?
So my question is then, my concern is, I understand what you're saying, but my concern is then, if perhaps one member is not here, and we run into the same situation in the future, if an applicant sees that it's not going the way that they'd like it to go, they can just go to the county attorney and say, we want to defer this until another time?
Well, what should have happened-
What kind of presidents are we sending to future applicants that, you know?
I think what should have happened was the fact, if somebody wants to address the board while the board is in session, they really ought to go to the clerk and make that request to the clerk. And the clerk can make the request to the chairperson, and the chairperson can make the call. And if it takes a vote of the board, that's how it should have happened. But the end result, and when you look at ultimately, the fair result of what actually happened, they were told to come back. There was never a vote taken on the actual preliminary subdivision plan. And I think ultimately, this board has to take some action on their preliminary subdivision plan because it hasn't yet. There was never even a vote ultimately on the motion to approve. Even if it should have been withdrawn, it never went to a vote.
So I have a question as well. So since it appears that nothing happened, are we working with a clean slate, that we rehear all of the information? What are our next steps? Where do we go from here?
Well, I believe it was made very clear at the last, at the meeting, that the only thing that needed to be reheared was the issue, they were coming back to address the concerns that had been raised by Ms. Shertler. And I believe that's what the report is directed to that, and that's, I mean, at this point, that's where discussion can go. I don't think it's a rule that says you can't ask another question that, you know, has gone, that shouldn't, but they're coming back to address the issues that Ms. Shertler raised. I think that was made clear at the meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Barnes.
Well, I'm going to go back to addressing the ability of an applicant to withdraw. So what are the rules behind, you know, how we allow an applicant to withdraw, you know, something they put before the board?
From my understanding, it doesn't usually happen here at the hearing. That's something that's generally dealt with administratively. And I have to let Mr. Ball or Ms. Pickarol address that, but my understanding is that sometimes when, let them such you address it and I guess it. How does that occur when they ask for prior to a hearing?
It's always through staff when they, when before the hearing, you know, they'll make the request, and we honor their request, we just don't put it on the agenda. But this may also be something that you could put in your rules and procedures to clarify when you're at the, when you're at the hearing, you know, that it's not permitted to make that kind of request to the board, or it is, depending on what you want to do.
So if they, if we, so if someone comes here to present, they get sick, we have to keep it on the agenda. They can't withdraw it. Once it's on the agenda, it's locked in stone?
No, it's your discretion.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking.
It's always at your discretion. But I'm just saying, you may want to clarify at what point in your review process that you no longer will consider that. And after they present their case, you could say, after an applicant presents their case, we will no longer consider a withdrawal or a table at their request.
And to be clear, I think the press was, we're using words interchangeably, and they would use that way at the prior meeting, but ultimately, we're talking about they wanted to defer it. The applicant never asked to withdraw it.
Right, it was deferred.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I have another question. And it goes again to Mr. Barnes's question about administratively deferred. My understanding is once an agenda has been adopted, it takes its supermajority to remove something from the agenda. And I am serious, I am very upset that that, those two projects were administratively deferred during a recess, and we did not vote on it. It gives an appearance that we're doing the public's business behind closed doors. There were a lot of people at that meeting on the 8th because they had earlier come to testify in a public hearing about Washington, of Royal White Oak, I believe the name. And they came to watch us make a decision on that, and it was administratively deferred during a close, during a recess. And I have, and if we need to adjust the rules of practice and procedure, we should, but I have a real problem with that, with what happened there.
Any other comments? Now, are you making reference to the Washington Discovery or Washington?
That same evening, after, after we, the motion to defer was lost for Washington's Discovery, counsel asked us to take a five-minute break. During that break, the applicant talked with somebody administratively, nobody on the board, and during the break, two other agenda items were deferred, administratively deferred. And we did not have any input in that. And my understanding, you know, with Robert's Rules, it actually takes a two-thirds, either consensus or two-thirds majority to change an adopted agenda.
Was that point raised on August 8 when the note was made?
I, we were all kind of a little surprised by it. I mean, I did not, I did not raise the point at that, at that time. I was, you know, again, it looks, it gives a very bad appearance, that somebody doesn't like the way things are going and so takes a break to withdraw something. And certainly seems it should have been done in public with some kind of justification.
Well, I do believe when we came back is when counsel informed us that they had requested to withdraw at that time.
Right.
So that wasn't done when the recording devices were off. They asked while they were off, but to be technically accurate, it was discussed after we were all seated again.
No, that we were, we were told.
We were told.
Yeah, we were instructed by counsel that it was administered, the two projects were administratively deferred.
I'd have to go back and look at it again, but I know we were seated when that discussion-
Well, we were seated when it was announced, but when the decision was made.
There was no discussion. Even though it was our meeting, that opportunity was taken away from us. We didn't have a hand in it. We were told what would happen.
And to the extent, and we're going to deal with, to the extent of persons approaching members of the county attorney's office during a meeting, that's going to be addressed internally in the county attorney's office. Because again, I think the way it should work, whether, and I know it's not stated this with specificity, if somebody wants to address the commission, they really ought to address the clerk and speak to the clerk, and the clerk will handle dealing with, you know, getting the issue, the message to the chairperson, and the chairperson would then decide how to handle it, and whether he's going to just deal with it, you know, you know, suis, you know, upon his own will, or to bring it to the, to the board. But those kind of requests should go through the clerk.
But, and then again, I guess the question also is, can staff administratively defer something when the board is working, you know, when we're here? I mean, I don't understand how that decision was made.
And I think that's a discussion. I don't have, I don't know what happened, and I don't have an opinion to that, but I think if you want to make sure it doesn't happen again, you could deal with that in your rules of procedure.
Any other comments before we move on? Yes?
I have one more comment. While I respectfully disagree that this should come up again, I do request, because our rules of practice and procedure allow us to invite members of the public to testify, I think it's section G, under applicable things we can do at a meeting, I, we were all kind of a little surprised by it. I mean, I did not, I did not raise the point at that, at that time. I was, you know, again, it looks, it gives a very bad appearance, that somebody doesn't like the way things are going and so takes a break to withdraw something. And certainly seems it should have been done in public with some kind of justification.
Well, I do believe when we came back is when counsel informed us that they had requested to withdraw at that time.
Right.
So that wasn't done when the recording devices were off. They asked while they were off, but to be technically accurate, it was discussed after we were all seated again.
No, that we were, we were told.
We were told.
Yeah, we were instructed by counsel that it was administered, the two projects were administratively deferred.
I'd have to go back and look at it again, but I know we were seated when that discussion-
Well, we were seated when it was announced, but when the decision was made.
There was no discussion. Even though it was our meeting, that opportunity was taken away from us. We didn't have a hand in it. We were told what would happen.
And to the extent, and we're going to deal with, to the extent of persons approaching members of the county attorney's office during a meeting, that's going to be addressed internally in the county attorney's office. Because again, I think the way it should work, whether, and I know it's not stated this with specificity, if somebody wants to address the commission, they really ought to address the clerk and speak to the clerk, and the clerk will handle dealing with, you know, getting the issue, the message to the chairperson, and the chairperson would then decide how to handle it, and whether he's going to just deal with it, you know, you know, suis, you know, upon his own will, or to bring it to the, to the board. But those kind of requests should go through the clerk.
But, and then again, I guess the question also is, can staff administratively defer something when the board is working, you know, when we're here? I mean, I don't understand how that decision was made.
And I think that's a discussion. I don't have, I don't know what happened, and I don't have an opinion to that, but I think if you want to make sure it doesn't happen again, you could deal with that in your rules of procedure.
Any other comments before we move on?
While I respectfully disagree that this should come up again, I do request, because our rules of practice and procedure allow us to invite members of the public to testify, I think it's section G, under applicable things we can do at a meeting, I respectfully request that you invite Dr. Long, who made a request in writing to address us about this, about Washington's Discovery.
When was this request made? Because I never saw it.
At the August 22 meeting, Dr. Long testified in public comments, and he's handed in a letter. And I did ask Ms. Pickarol to send a copy of the written comments to everybody. So it should have been emailed to you.
But it wasn't public comment, it was during the personal appearance.
I'm sorry, personal appearance, I apologize.
It wasn't a public comment.
Yeah, there was, there, but we do have, we have the option of inviting people up. And given, to be fair, I think we should-
Well, I guess a question I have is, I thought we had a public hearing on this, and somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, we did not have a public hearing. This is preliminary, so there was no public hearing.
I'd like, okay, I'm sorry.
No, my question is, is this still a matter of, as indicated by Chairman Bowling earlier, that items on the agenda are not to be discussed during the time of the meeting?
Yeah, because that's currently, that's currently in our policy and procedures.
Correct, but also our policy and procedures say that we can, you can, invite members, people up to speak. It's number G, section G. Under section 7, action at meetings, G, it says the commission will not recognize expert witnesses, but will hear witnesses and give way to their testimony as the commission deems appropriate, based on the knowledge of the witness. Since Dr. Long does have, is, does have a lot of knowledge, and he has requested to speak on this issue, and we have, we have the authority to invite him, as a personal, I would, I think it would be fair to invite him to speak as part of, when we discuss Washington's Discovery. I'm requesting that of the chair.
Counsel, I need your help on this one. You know, I know that we've made this statement in the past, that under no personal appearances, people can talk about projects that are on the agenda. Now, what Ms. Shertler's bringing up, saying that I have the discretion to say that, to allow someone to do that, and if you allow one person, then what about everyone else that wants to speak on this project?
That's not really a legal question, but let me just ask this question. Where does it say that on personal appearances, you can't talk about something, is that a written rule? Is that written that, because I'm not seeing it. Is that just a rule that's kind of been by practice stated by the chair during this meeting?
That's been something that Steve, I'll-
It's in here.
It's in here.
They're reviewing this.
Number 5.
Six, five.
Six, five. Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you say what it is?
It is under section six, the agenda, under item five.
And it basically, it's the second sentence, it's the third sentence. "Any citizen desired to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may request to do so under the personal appearances section at the beginning of each session."
If I may, I'm actually not suggesting Mr. Long, Dr. Long, speak on personal appearances. I'm asking him to be allowed to testify when we are discussing, when the, with the presentation of Washington's discovery, as he was requested and as our rules allow. So it wouldn't be part of personal appearances, it would be as an, as a witness, because our procedure allows us to do that.
At the discretion of the chairman.
Yes. As a, actually, it says, "As the commission deems appropriate," but yes.
Okay, so you're not, you're. Well, I have a question then. So, personal appearances, I can understand, but at the time that we're hearing one of the cases brought forward, I mean, it sounds like it's in the realm of expert witness. So, as you said, he's pretty knowledgeable on it. I guess I don't understand the difference.
Well, as far as expert witnesses, the rule should say that you don't have, you're not going to deem them an expert, you're going to give it whatever weight you're going to, you're going to give it. So you don't have to give it the weight of an expert. But I think the issue is regard, expert, not expert, she was, the issue she's raising is, she wants to, she's asking you to let, you could let them come speak, and I haven't found the words at your discretion yet, but if that's what it says, then it is your discretion.
Actually, the text, the text says, "The commission will not recognize expert witnesses, but will hear witnesses and give weight to their testimony as the commission deems appropriate based on the knowledge of the witness." Right.
Any other comments?
Will we, will you be inviting this Dr. Long up?
Let's, let's get, you know, how does the rest of the commission feel about it? I, you know, I want people, I want input from the body. I don't want this to be a single decision by me. I want, how does the body feel, and then I'll, I'll make a decision on it. Because it does say in the next, next sentence, "Chair at his discretion may locate the issue for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda." So what's, what am I, how do my colleagues feel about this, since we're discussing this matter?
I think that under the circumstances, I think that we should allow him to speak, because I think the public has a right, under the circumstances, that things were said behind closed doors, and there's a lot of debate of whether this moves forward or not. So I think absolutely, if he's here tonight, then I think he should be able to speak.
Not only that, but if he made the request, I think we should at least consider it.
Mr. Chair, I think if you do that, and, and more information is a wonderful thing, but I think if you do that, you've got to give the, the landowner developer the opportunity to refute it if, if necessary, or, or do some homework on it, and I think you're just going to push their, their plan out the, out the door, further out, because you're going to ask them, you know, you're asking them to come up unprepared. I just don't think that's, that's fair.
But the applicant has an opportunity to present information. That's, that's.
Not prior to that information coming in, into his.
During the discussion of, of that particular plan, there's an opportunity for the applicant to address all of the issues that we feel that we need to discuss with that person.
Correct, and if you bring up new issues after that, I think he's got the right to, to, to decide that.
But it's this board's decision to make that vote, whether we need that further information from the applicant or not.
Okay.
At the end of the day, it's our decision.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
We just have to have some more.
I just think they ought, ought to have, they ought to have the opportunity.
I think it goes both sides. I think we do need to give the applicant the opportunity, but we need to give the public just as much opportunity for this, for us to show transparency, and I don't think that this board is showing the transparency that it needs to.
Mr. Magoo, I'm going to get to that issue, I'm going to let the rest of the board, and we'll, we'll find out in a few minutes. Mr. Barnes, you had a comment.
Well, the only thing I'm, I'm going to, I want to comment on is, we keep throwing around the, the lack of transparency, the fact that they came up and asked to withdraw it, and it was discussed back on the record, I don't think that this board has been having secret backroom discussions, and it's, that's the way it sounds, and I think that's inappropriate to send that message forward. There were procedural problems that we've noted, and I think we need to correct those procedural problems, but I don't want the message going out that there has been, you know, some kind of backroom discussions. That's my comment on it. Oh, I'm sorry, and the, the other item is, if we're going to allow that, are you going to place a time limit on people that, if we're going to allow people to come up and do that outside of the personal appearances as part of the, this regular agenda, will there be a time limit like we do on the personal appearances?
I think we're going to almost have to, because it's going to prolong the meeting, and we want to, we want to get through these items. Joan, I think you had a comment as well.
Yeah, my comment involved the matter, as we talk about transparency of the committee, there needs to be fairness to the, the developers, because I do recall, in this instance of Washington's discovery, there were any number of questions asked by Ms. Shertler and another member, Ms. Sherard, that caused Mr. Lesnar to suggest to them that he could make the changes they requested. And as I read the second presentation of Washington's discovery, I noticed that all of their concerns had been addressed, including putting rain barrels at every house, which really is not a requirement, but they chose to do that. And we're now trying to kick this can down the road further, I don't know how else to say this, and, and my other question is, when we have this to happen, if someone joins us in a discussion outside of personal appearances on Washington's discovery, have we, aside from their voting, increased the number of people on the planning commission besides the official seven that's, that are here? Certainly, people can make comments, but I think there's been some unfairness in what I've seen with how this has been handled.
Is the landowner here as well as his representative?
Yes.
Is it fair to, stay seated, Mr. Lesnar. Is it fair to say that if we would allow Mr. Long to make comments, that the landowner or yourself would be able to address those issues or concerns? Please answer yes or no.
Appreciate your question, Council.
If we, if I have the discretion of allowing Mr. Long, who has requested to speak, once Washington's discovery is, is going to be discussed, present what he has to say, because he did make that request, then would you or the landowner be able to, during the discussion time, address whatever he brings up?
No.
Yes? Nancy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make one thing clear. At the, at the August 8th meeting, I was not asking questions, or I was justifying my vote. So I wasn't looking for the applicant to come up and address the issues, though what I was talking about was the justification, the findings to justify my vote. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, Dr. Long had no more expectation of being brought up here tonight than the applicant, so I don't see why it would be any more of a disadvantage to the property owner than to Dr. Long to bring him up. And given the irregularity of this entire procedure, I think, you know, the fact that we have members of the public who have requested in writing to be given the opportunity to speak with us, I think it's incumbent on us to do so. I think it's only fair.
All right. Is staff, I still haven't made my decision yet, because again, my feeling is, and I, I don't appreciate the comments, the lack of transparency, because I, I feel that we try to, we try to be fair and equitable about everything we discuss in this body, and we discuss it right here in front of the general public. It's just, this is, this, this is entirely different case since I was not here, and I'll be honest with you, I did go out and visit the site. I did visit the site. I took the time, I read the documents, and I went out and looked at the site. So with that, and from what I understand from council, it's totally up to me to make the decision of whether or not that Mr. Long can come up and speak. And Mr. Ty Ziegler?
If, if I could for just a moment, and I think this, this whole discussion is illustrative of how difficult the August 8th meeting was, in the sense that there were a number of things that happened that I think everyone involved regrets. And part of the issue is that we have a fairly old, outdated set of planning commission rules and procedures, and one of the things that we have been working with, with several members of the planning commission, is redoing those. That is a, I'm going to say, a more difficult task than we had thought, but we also now have the, the opportunity to benefit from the things that did happen on August 8th. And I kind of look at it as I, as I listen to this whole discussion, that that was really a learning moment, a teaching moment for all of us, and I think at the staff level, what we'd like to do is have the opportunity to go back and, and take this discussion into account, work on revising those rules and procedures, but also to build in a mechanism, perhaps, that if the planning commission, the chairman, so chose to invite public comment in ways different than we have in the past, that we could build that in with, I'm going to say, parameters that work for both the planning commission and the public. But right now, we seem to, we're having a discussion, we're trying to potentially alter the way that the planning commission operates, and for lack of a better way of describing it, on the fly. Our suggestion is that if the planning commission wants to change the way it operates, let's do it through the rules and procedures, and let's build into the rules and procedures the things that you want to see.
Nancy, can I, can I, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Ty Ziegler, and I agree with you 100%. Nancy, can I ask a question? And my question, what do you feel that Mr. Long can present is going to have impact on the decision that we're, the decision that this body is going to make on this particular preliminary plat?
Dr. Long is an expert on Madawoman watershed, and it's, when he spoke, he also spoke about the adjacent problems, adjacent watershed, which is Nantamoy, that this property drains into. This, this property, I mean, I can, I have, Dr. Long is an expert on biology, and it's way over my head. I know that I, when I walked through that property, you saw it yourself, you know, there's an invasive Asian stilts grass through there. I know that there's a dwarf wedge mussel that is on the endangered species list a half mile downriver, a half mile away. So I am not, I mean, I am not a scientist, or, but, and, and I, Dr. Long is not an expert, but he has been involved in environmental stewardship in our county for a long time, and I highly, he's a highly respected member of the community, and he asked to address this. Do I know what he's going to say? No. I mean, but I, I'm very interested in hearing what he has to say, because this is such an environmentally sensitive location, it is in our priority preservation area, and because, you know, we have to have reasons to approve or deny something based on facts, and I think Dr. Long can possibly provide facts that we're not going to get from the applicant.
Okay. Well, I have, I have one more question to ask Mr. Ty Ziegler and council. If we allow Mr. Long to make comments, and, and I kind of feel very strongly that we're, we're setting a precedence, and that, that concerns me because of the fact that our policies and procedures right now are currently under discussion, and yes, we learned a lot, including myself, from the August 8th meeting. So that's, that's my biggest concern at this point. I hate to deny someone, Nancy, the right to speak, but I'm concerned about the precedence that it's going to set. Go ahead, I'm.
But, but it's, it's already in our policy, it's in our rules and practice and procedure. We're not setting a precedent, it's in our rules. It's, we are allowed to do it. It's no precedent.
But it says in there, unless I'm misunderstanding what I've been told, that it's up to me to make the decision of whether we allow that to happen.
No, that was actually two separate places.
Two separate.
One of the places they were referring to was under the personal appearances.
I'm not talking about personal appearances, council, I'm talking about.
At action at meetings, which is, is the section that Ms. Shertler was referring to, under section G, it says that the commission will not recognize experts, but will hear witnesses and give weight to their testimony, the commission deems appropriate based upon the knowledge of the witness. So I can't really speak to where the practice came from, to say nobody can't talk, but she is correct as far as what the rules say, and that you can hear from persons.
Okay, well, if we can hear from people, then there's not much I can say then, if it, if it's in the current policies.
I'm only going to point out that I think I agree with Ms. Shertler that you can, if you and the planning commission show choose, and you have been able to do that for some period of time. It has been the history and the culture of this planning commission not to allow that, at least up till now. The only suggestion I'm making is, I, I think we're probably moving in that direction very fast, but that the way, in, in order to do that in a fair, efficient way, our suggestion is that we wait until we have new rules and procedures for you to consider. That's a staff suggestion. I think it is up to the discretion of the chairman and the planning commission if you so choose to hear public comment.
I guess my question would be then, what would be the new thing? Because if it's already stated, then, then what's new?
I think what, what, from the staff perspective, we would probably lay out some parameters as to how that would work, and it might be how long someone could speak, whether an individual, a group, whether or not the person speaking could question, cross-examine the staff or the applicant, things of that nature, which if not, if you don't have reasonable parameters, these discussions turn into kind of brawls between citizens or applicants who are fighting with each other or having issues with the application. So the, the whole point here is to, to keep it in some fair, reasonable, organized fashion, which we don't have in place here yet.
So even though we have the, the language, you're saying that it's just too vague to proceed definitively to allow the public to speak at this point, that we need to go back and refine?
I mean, at the staff level, we would, we would prefer that we did this in an organized way. This will be a sea change in the way that the planning commission operates and functions. We acknowledge that. But if the planning commission chooses to work in that direction, I'm only suggesting that you establish whatever necessary parameters, and we would make suggestions on what those would be, so that this transition from an operating procedure works in a reasonable, fair way. I can tell you that in having worked in a variety of other jurisdictions, we have always allowed public comment at planning commission meetings. But the only way it worked was we had some of the provisions that we're talking about in place, so that each case didn't take nine hours. And, and that's the reason we're suggesting this, that we just do it in an organized fashion, if that's the way that you want to proceed.
Okay.
Historically, we haven't done it here, so it's a big change. Oh, okay, could be. I may not be aware of it, so.
Yes. There was a decision made by this body that has been taken to the Board of Appeals, because the, the members of the public asked to speak, and they were told they, we did not have the provisions for them to speak.
What case was that, Ms.?
I believe it's the Guilford subdivision.
That's correct.
So, you know, it has come up before, and I guess we could, the public has the same recourse, but I think, you know, again, given what a sticky mess this has been, but again, I've given my argument.